I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning our meeting. Before we do, I'd like to invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Rick Culver will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly- Hello? There we go. No, it's on. Okay. Let's pray. Or not.
Wait and talk.
There you go. Hello? Okay, let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for this time of year when everything is so green, the birds are singing, the flowers are blooming. Also ask you to help us in our decisions tonight to do the best what is for the citizens of Springdale, and we ask you to watch over and care for us every day of our lives. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Rick. The good news is God doesn't need a microphone, right? Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
This is, uh, we do have the large print copies of the large print agenda over here. Alan's holding them up if that would be helpful to anyone. That said, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, the Springdale City Council. This is our regular meeting of Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018, and I'll ask Denise Pierce, our city clerk, to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Rick Culver.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Colby Fulfer.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rick Evans.
Here.
Jim Reed.
Here.
Kathy J. Cox.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna start things off, uh, right away with item four. It's a presentation of the economic impact study that has been completed for trails, and Brendan Quirk is here to make that presentation. Brendan?
Thank you, Mayor, and the council for allowing me to present this study on the economic impact of cycling trails onto Northwest Arkansas. When it comes to cycling infrastructure and access, it's an incredibly exciting time here in Springdale. Phase one of Dean's Trail is officially underway. Over at the Jones Center, mountain bike skills park and pump track are slated to be fully built out by October 1st, and the trails over at Fitzgerald Mountain, the mountain bike trails over at Fitzgerald Mountain will be publicly unveiled in the second week of June. We brought a number of special guests to Fitzgerald Mountain to preview those trails, and the response has been overwhelming. Um, the trail system there, the feedback we're getting, the trail system there is totally world-class. It will be a bucket list destination for riders from across the region and beyond. There's a lot to be proud of. So whether you're a mountain bike tourist visiting Northwest Arkansas for the first time, someone hoping to commute to work by bike, or a kid learning to ride off-road for the first time, Springdale's gonna have a heck of a lot to offer in terms of cycling. So in terms of the presentation, um, give you some quick background. We engaged an organization in Denver, Colorado called BBC Research and Consulting. They specialize in local economic market research, policy research, statistical research. They're really best in class. They work in communities across America doing local-level economic impact studies. We knew on an intuitive level that a lot of the investments we've made in cycling in Northwest Arkansas are having a financial impact and a quality-of-life impact, and we wanted to quantify those investments, uh, which was the purpose of this study. As you can see here, all across Northwest Arkansas, we're seeing an increase in the amount of cycling. Springdale saw a 30% increase in the number of people riding a bike year over year. The question is, why are people riding in greater numbers across Northwest Arkansas? It's for a couple of reasons. One is a population and demographic shift. According to the Northwest Arkansas Council, Northwest Arkansas is growing at 34 new residents per day, every day. Since 2010, Northwest Arkansas is the ninth fastest-growing metro in the United States, and Northwest Arkansas has the 10th highest share of millennials in the workforce on a percentage basis in all of the United States. So that demographic shift is real and profound. You combine that with successful development of a lot of cycling infrastructure, and that's the result you see in, um, in those numbers up there. In terms of the cycling infrastructure investments, Walton Family Foundation has contributed $74 million since 2007 to build 163 miles of mountain bike trails and paved trails, including the Greenway right here through downtown Springdale. The economic impact of those investments, according to BBC, had a $137 million economic impact onto Northwest Arkansas in 2017. Those impacts boil down to two, uh, two categories. One is the healthcare-related costs and savings, and the other is the business-related impacts to trails. In regards to the, the health-related costs, they really boil down to two things. One is better health means reduced healthcare costs for the citizens of Northwest Arkansas, and you also have what's called reduced mortality benefits. What BBC did is they estimated the number of deaths averted because of regular, regular exercise, including cycling, and then they estimated the economic value of those prevented deaths. What that means is when someone is still with us, when they haven't passed away, they're, they have, they can do consumer spending. When you avert those premature deaths, you save a lot of cost to society as well. That includes inability to work. That includes healthcare costs. That includes pain and suffering. The, the methodology that BBC used is one that's embraced by the Department of Transportation, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the Food and Drug Administration when they weigh the costs and benefits of new policy. So it's a tried and true methodology there from a healthcare perspective. And then when we look at the business impact of cycling in Northwest Arkansas, the majority of that impact is tourism-related. We saw $27 million in tourist spending by out-of-state visitors in 2017, people who came to Northwest Arkansas to enjoy the mountain bike trails that we've developed here. That means hotel receipts, restaurant spending, gas for their car, et cetera. We know that 90,000 bicycle tourists visited Northwest Arkansas in 2017, and that 57% of the mountain bike rides on regional trails came from people outside the region. Then in terms of local residents, local residents spent $24 million on, on local spending, places like Fat Tire and Lewis &amp; Clark here in Springdale, on bicycle-related expenses, whether that's new bikes, getting their bikes tuned up, and so forth. As it relates to, to quality-of-life priorities for new residents and new millennials to Northwest, uh, to Northwest Arkansas, BBC interviewed 600 Northwest Arkansas residents. They also did five interviews for, at, um, at five major employers here in Northwest Arkansas, their human resource departments, to try to understand the role of the region's bike infrastructure to attracting and retaining talent to the region. And what we learned is that 30% of Northwest Arkansas residents consider nearby paved bike infrastructure as being important to decide where they live, and the 27% of Northwest Arkansas residents consider nearby mountain bike trails as important decision-making factors on where they live. What we've seen between 2017 and 2015 has been a 24% increase in, um, soft surface or mountain bike trail usage. We've actually seen a really dramatic increase on weekday usages as well. A 27% of Northwest Arkansas residents rode a bike six days or more in 2017. And one other fact that's really interesting to me, to a lot of us, is that Northwest Arkansas actually has a greater percentage of women riding bikes six or more times a year than the national average, which was unusual and really unexpected to hear, and we were really excited about that. We've come a long way in Northwest Arkansas. We feel like we still have a lot of upside as well. We are ahead of great bike-riding communities like San Francisco and San Diego, but we look at some of our kind of North Star-type communities, communities that we can aspire to be like. You look at communities like Portland, like Vancouver, like Minneapolis, and when we look at cycling participation per capita, we feel like on a measurable basis, we know where we'd like to go in terms of participation, uh, in terms of cycling, generally speaking. And, and the investments in trails aren't just for cyclists. Trails are also being used in a big way by pedestrians and hikers and dog walkers as well. We're seeing a similar increase year over year in pedestrian usage of our trails. We know that our trails average 65,000 pedestrians per year, and to show that those, you know, health benefits are not just for cyclists but for pedestrians as well. So we feel like we've learned that trails provide a clear, measurable business benefit, public health benefit, quality-of-life benefit. We feel like we have a lot of momentum here in Springdale in terms of enthusiasm and support for trails, and I would like to ask your continued support as we try to develop more in the way of mountain bike trails, as we try to continue to develop the Greenway system beyond the spine that runs through downtown, and for on-street cycling infrastructure as well.
Great. Thank you, Brendan. Uh, Chris, you're, uh, Chair of our Trails Committee. Did you have anything to add, or? I know we've got the, the groundbreaking-
Groundbreaking.
-for Dean's Trail. Tomorrow at 4 o'clock at the rodeo grounds for the Dean's Trail. It was scheduled for last week, and we had bad weather, so we postponed it. So hope everybody will join us tomorrow at 4:00 PM for that. Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much. That's good information. Alan Lord, Director of Shallow Museum, uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Shallow Museum, and I didn't mean I was sorry that you're Director of Shallow Museum.
All right, then.
Alan, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, council members, I appreciate just a few minutes of your time. I normally don't come and brag too much, but in the past eight weeks, we've had four awards, and I want to bring up three of my staff members. If you'll, um, this brings us to 70 regional, state, and national awards since 1982 of significance. Right in the middle. There you are. The first was presented by the Washington County Women's History Month Coalition. It was a Women in History Award, and that was presented to the staff member that most of you know, Susan Young, our outreach coordinator. That recognizes Washington County women who've made significant contributions to the community in leadership and in role models. She is off doing as she does best today, giving a presentation to one of the community groups, so she wasn't able to make it. Second, last month, the Arkansas Museums Association had their annual awards, and two of our staff members received these awards. These are highly sought after and, and have a lot of nominations. So I'd first like to recognize, as the award for the Graduate Student of the Year is our Research Specialist Rachel Whitaker, uh, holding her nice award. She has been with us for three years. She, along with her job, she's also a social studies instructor at Connor State in college in Warner, Oklahoma, and significantly for this award, she's working on her PhD in history at UA. So congratulations to Rachel. She's a crack researcher, and if any of you have been looking at your businesses, your corporations, your family history, your, sorry, I won't go in on-
Emma Avenue.
Emma Avenue. This woman knows the research, and she digs and finds it. That's amazing. Second, from the Arkansas Museums Association, every museum in the state wants this award. It's for a staff member at a, at a, at a museum in the state, so a distinguished museum professional in Arkansas. The award this year went to our Collections and Education Specialist, Aaron Lowendorf, who is, uh, been with us-
There you go.
Also a biker, a big biker, bikes to work almost every day, so we give him credit. He's, uh, he's been working with us for four years. He's worked at museums in Washington State and in Wisconsin, and now has home in Arkansas. We appreciate him. And last but not least, the Arkansas Historical Association gives awards every year, and they met last month, and they rarely give this award. It's the Diamond Award. It's given to an institution that makes an exceptional contribution to the study, preservation, or promotion of Arkansas history, and for the first time, Shiloh Museum got it. This is Assistant Director Carolyn Reno, who's can-modeling the award. So the Diamond Award was presented to the Shiloh Museum last month, and it's a very coveted and not often given award, so we appreciate that. Thank you. I wanna take just, I told the mayor just one, just a little more time to tell you two things. This is the museum's 50th anniversary year. We have three exhibits up right now that'll be here through the, to 2019, about our 50 years, and I think, if you haven't seen them, I will say that our 50 for 50 exhibit, the Carolyn Reno curated, uh, presents one object donated in each of our 50 years, and as I like to say, it includes everything from a pair of pants of a 500-pound man to a bong. So, um, it might be worth a visit, but on a more serious note, it also includes to be one of the most important items we have in our collection, and that is a Springdale Railroad Depot door that says "White Waiting Room." So that's an exhibit worth seeing, as well as two other exhibits. We are, however, in September planning two big parties. We want you all to attend. We'll be seeing things in the news soon. Uh, our 50th anniversary frolic is Saturday, September 8th. It'll be in the evening. It'll be food trucks, it'll be ice cream and a, uh, cake, and signature ice cream made just for us, flavored to be announced. We'll be doing old-fashioned chores, um, like the kids do, and we'll be having music and dancing, a lot of fun. And significantly, the board determined that they want this to be celebratory and not a fundraiser, so we're raising private funds to fund it. It'll be free to everyone to come and enjoy. And then, two weeks later, on Saturday, September 22nd, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, we'll have our 50th anniversary family celebration, where families and kids can come. We'll have scavenger hunts, we'll have pictures with characters, we'll have old-fashioned toys, games, music, all the stuff going on, and that signature ice cream with cake. So, uh, we'll be sending things out about that, and just want you to keep that on your radar for coming up in September. And lastly, I want to announce, we just have set the date, um, we're gonna have the grand opening for the Shiloh Meeting Hall, AKA Oddfellows Lodge, Shiloh Church. You all know it on, on Hunsborough Avenue, January 30th, uh, January, June 30th, so about six weeks from now, at the hall. We believe we'll start about 10:00 AM, and we'll get information out that real soon. It's about, it'll be 1.4 million or so by the time it's all done, and we're pleased as punch to get it done and have it open to you. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Alan. Great stuff. Good deal. Uh, we're at item six, and, uh, this is the portion of the meeting, each meeting, that the council sets aside for comments from our citizens. Uh, if we have, uh, residents that would like to address the council, uh, we ask that you come to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief, and understand that, uh, the council won't be taking action on anything you bring forward tonight. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, the approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes. If there's no additions or changes, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
I'll move to-
Second.
Okay. Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item eight, procedural motions. What's your pleasure?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Reed.
Yes.
J. Cox.
Yes.
Culver.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Fulfer.
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right. Thank you. Now, we are, uh, at item nine. This is an appeal of a planning commission denial of a rezoning, and I'll ask, uh, Attorney Jim Crouch to come forward and, uh, and start us off.
Mayor, Councilperson's. I represent the landowner of this 20 acres that, uh, his name is Billy Fields. His property is located on Ball Avenue, or Ball Road, excuse me, um, just a bit north of County Line Road, all of which is north of Elm Springs Road. So it's in the western part of the city. Mr. Fields sought to rezone this property from A1, agricultural, to SF2, which is low, medium-density, single-family. Land use plan calls for this property to be low-density. There's a substantial part, a substantial amount of land that's across the road from this, all along Ball Avenue, that's already SF2. And there's, there's a, there's a actual subdivision north of this, down by Willis Shaw School, that's all SF2. It's my understanding that the planning office recommended that this property be rezoned from A1 to SF2. I was not at the rezoning hearing the planning commission held. I understand there was a fair amount, maybe that's an understatement of opposition to it, and although I don't know, and maybe no one knows, I, I think people sensed that it was folks that live in a subdivision in Elm Springs that's immediately north of this property. And, uh, the planning commission denied the request, which of course prompted this appeal. I don't, I don't really know what the vote was. I think it was a split vote, five to two, according to our city attorney. So while, you know, we understand that some rezonings are unpopular, and apparently this one was, that's not really the issue. It's not a popularity contest. It's a matter of whether it's within the ordinary orderly development of the city of Springdale, whether it's consistent with the land use plan, and we submit that this is. It is, land is vacant, by the way. The plan for it is a subdivision. It is, we think, and I think, I think the planning office may agree, that the highest and best use of this land is for residential purposes. Are no doubt some very, very nice homes that are subdivision north of this, on very large lots in Elm Springs. Beautiful homes, there's no question about it, but they are located and surrounded by vacant land, land that just across the street is already SF2, low-density residential. So, I believe this land should be, that you should reverse or, or burst the appeal, that you should grant the zoning. Now, uh, probably know this, you've heard enough of these zoning matters to know, but SF2 allows four units per acre. Because there will be a detention or retention pond, I'm not sure which, but on this property, there will be three roughly, three, uh, homes per acre. So we would ask that you- Glad to answer any questions. Jason Apple from PSI, the engineering firm that handled this, answered questions.
Okay.
Can I ask one? I was there that evening, Jim. You'd think after all these years I would know. Is there an SF1?
Yes.
So is there a reason that you're not asking, your client's not asking for SF1, since you're talking about three units per acre, to basically, um, uh, give the peace of mind that some people are very concerned about?
Well, I actually could answer this better than any of us probably. I don't think that three per acre will fit in an SF1. But the best utilization of land's only 20 acres. Best utilization of the land is for-
Right.
And, and we contend that that, that is consistent with the land use plan, as did the planning commission.
Jim, why don't you stay handy, and let's let Patsy give us a little background from the planning department's perspective, and, and maybe, uh, I, I was at the planning commission meeting too, but if there's anything she wants to add from that. And Jim will still be here for questions if you all have any.
The definition, the definition of low-income, I mean, low-density residential is one to four units per acre, and SF1 allows from one to four, and SF2 allows from one to four. Maximum of four units per acre on either one of those zoning classifications. The only difference between the, the two, the two zoning classifications is that SF1 has an 80-foot minimum frontage on a public street, and SF2 has a 70-foot frontage. Can be the same density depending on what size lots you're putting in. There are lots of subdivisions all over the town, all over the city that are SF2 zones that have various sizes of houses. Our ordinance right now does not address a minimum size of a structure on any of these lots, regardless of what size, uh, what zoning classification you go after. It doesn't, we don't have a lot of, we don't have any design standards for residential development either. If the issue is the quality of the houses that are going in, and the houses' sizes, the zoning issue's not where you take care of that issue. The issue is taken care of with design standards. Because four units per acre, we consider to be low-income regardless of-
Low-density.
Low-density. I was working on a low-income application this afternoon.
Okay.
I gotta get to two. It is not low-income housing. Sorry. It is low-density.
Hey, Patsy, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry.
Sure.
The only, only difference is 70-foot street frontage-
Versus 80.
Versus 80, is that correct?
And SF1 has an 80-foot frontage that requires 80-foot of frontage and 10,000 square feet per, per lot, and SF2 has 70-foot of frontage, and it requires 9,000 square feet.
So it could be a smaller lot in an SF2.
It could be a smaller, a small lot. Same setbacks, 20 front, 20 back, 30 front, and on each side. Those things are all the same.
Yeah.
And the comprehensive land use plan shows for this location, low-density residential, and this is in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan. And it's the discussion of what is the highest and best use of the, of the property with zoning. Questions raised about drainage, and streets, and congestion, all that kind of stuff is addressed when we get to a subdivision plan itself.
All right. Thank you. Further questions for Patsy or for Jim before we?
Mike has questions.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Councilmembers, my name is John Welton. I was at the meeting. On the south side of the property, four acres, a little bit, a little bit over four acres, and there's multiple houses that will be affected by the building of this subdivision. I lived in, uh, Springdale twice, out of Springdale Springs. I still have a Springdale address. My daughter goes to Shaw Elementary, and take her to school, and I pick her up. I watch the construction of houses that are going in over there. There are at least nine, main road going in, at least nine houses that are already for rent. Neighborhood that I live in, they're all owned. No one's renting them out. Property, the houses, the homes, it's around, anywhere from 400 to $800,000. It's touching. That 20 acres is island around Elm Springs. How'd it happen? But going back to Shaw Elementary and all the houses that are going over there, those are, at best, $150,000 homes. I have nothing against Mr. Fields selling his house, selling this property, if he made a profit off of it. Construction company that's going in there to build the houses, they're gonna have to put a lot of houses on there in order to reap benefits that they put into it. Not gonna put in 200, 300,000-dollar homes. It's gonna be right at the back of my-
What are you, what are you basing that on?
Basing that's listed on the homes that are in Shaw Elementary area.
You're basing, you're basing the, the price of homes going on this 20 acres, on the homes going into, around Shaw Elementary?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Rous Coleman and then Riggins, Riggins, he has homes in that subdivision as well. And Riggs, Riggins is- Riggs, Riggins, is the contractor that's gonna be building the houses. Same thing. It's gonna be lower, lower costing homes going in there, and within months of a house being built, it's gonna be rented out. Rent houses at the back of my property. I didn't ask for that. I even talked to all the people that spoke for an hour at the zoning committee, even talked to the mayor of Elm Springs, that maybe we can ask Billy Fields to sell us the property. Eight homes want in there, or put quality homes in there. Zoning passed last week. You guys to determine whether or not it's right for the homes to go in there, have rental homes back in these properties. And it was even discussed, the Camelot subdivision, it's around. Pay a lot of money for homes not to have rental homes go up behind them. I'm standing here, two months of a home being built up there, a house. Like to see what you guys vote on, and, and vision or wisdom as to how you voted and why you voted.
Thank you, John.
I have one comment. We do not have a zoning classification that restricts rental units. A single-family, whether it's SF1, RE, or any of those, there's no way to regulate that. And I don't think Elm Springs does either, that you can say if it's zoned, just you can have any rental units on.
Patsy, I'm sorry, I missed half of what you just said. I don't think that microphone is exactly in the right place.
It was, we were getting a lot of feedback. Can we try and bring that up a little? And, and if you come up to the microphone, if you come up to the microphone, speak right into it, and then, then he can hopefully, hopefully adjust.
Mike's right, I usually have a problem.
We didn't, now you can hear me? Okay, I can stand back here now.
Okay, sorry, everybody.
We do not have a zoning classification that is for homeownership units only. SF1, SF2, SF3, RE, all of those allow for building of residential structures, but it doesn't say that they can, they have to be owner-occupied. I don't know that there's any way that you can set that with a zoning classification. I don't think there's any city around that does that either.
Patsy, what about the RE? That's a half-acre lot, but nothing says what size the house has to be, is there?
No, and it's a one-acre lot, and there's nothing that says what size. No matter which one of the zoning classifications you pick, nothing sets the minimum size of the house, or the quality of how the house has to be built. In my opinion, that's an area that we really need to concentrate on, is making sure that we are getting quality houses built in the zoning classifications that we have available.
So this is my understanding, then, the, I would, is it safe to say, then, that the size of the home is more determined by the market, and what, what price homes the, the developer would need to build in order to recoup or to make money on their, on their development? Is that fair? I'm not a builder, so I don't know that.
Well, I'm not a builder either, but I, I'm sure that there's a lot of that goes into it, and what's the demand from the market? What, what housing market are we trying to fill? And if, if there's demand for larger houses on larger lots, I think we will see that if there're demand for larger houses on smaller lots, because people don't look, want something they have to take care of. I think that the market addresses that. You've heard me say hundreds of thousands of times, cities don't build cities. It's people who are willing to invest their private dollars in the city is what that, what makes that work, and that's how it's always worked.
I'm gonna say real quick, Doug, that, that this is in my ward, mine and Colby's ward, and that, I'm gonna say that the homes that I've seen, for the most part, built around the legendary subdivision, are excellent homes for families. I don't see that they're, they may not be mansions, but they're good homes, and they seem to be goodwill-built homes that I've seen, you know, for the most part. And I know that Mr. Riggins has bought, built a lot of those. I think that as far as, like Patsy said, I think part of our problem is design standards on residential, but I don't think that can go against this zoning.
But I think, to your point, Jim, we have an obligation as a city to provide the opportunities for property owners, but we have also an obligation to protect those adjacent property owners, and the value of their homes, and their investment too. So I think, I don't know how that plays into all this, but it's, it's been one of those things we've struggled, struggled with, which is why we've got a form-based code downtown right now, which is why we have design standards in different places, the overlay district, to basically protect the investors that not only are currently there, but those that are coming forward. This is something to think about, that's all I'm just asking you.
In, in response to that, I, I would say, I, I do understand the form-based code, and I do understand the overlay district, but those were, those were implemented from, you know, this point forward, this is gonna be the standard. To do this at this point is moving the finish line on a developer, a builder, and a landowner to say, you know, "We didn't have these set in place, but now we're gonna do it right at closing time." And I think it's, you're moving the finish line on somebody. If we wanted to have those standards out there, that, that should've been something done a long time ago. But to do it now at the, at closing date, I, I don't think that that's a fair move to the, to the landowner or the builders.
I do wanna point out, the overlay district, the southwest does not have any standards for housing either. It's commercial development standards, it's not residential standards. And the form-based code deals with it in a totally different manner in what it looks like.
My only point for saying that is to protect the property owners that are currently investors.
Right.
Those that own homes and so forth, plus those that are coming in and investing millions of dollars in this community. And if, if you don't consider the long-term effects of what happens at the planning commission table and this table, then we really have sometimes done, we have in the past, done a disservice to some. I'm not saying that's happening now, but it has happened.
Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Langton. I live at 911 King Arthur Drive, just directly adjacent to the subject property. And, you know, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but I, I did try and do a little bit of research on the appeal itself and through the process, and tried to, I, I just made a few observations that I just wanna share with the, with the council. And for the record, I am opposed to the appeal being granted, so. But I noticed the, the appellant states that the reason for the denial is that it was, the decision to deny was arbitrary and capricious, and that the petition is in accordance with the land use plan for the city of Springdale. There are a number of adjacent or nearby subdivisions with the same zoning classification sought by the appellant. The failure to recommend and approve the rezoning of this property is a denial of due process to the appellant, and denies him the right to use the subject property for its highest and best use. So, again, not being a lawyer, I, I had to look up arbitrary and capricious. And, you know, I mean, you can look up the individual terms, but I, I looked up in, in the legal sense, and, and I'm sorry to be redundant, 'cause you all probably know what this means, but I just wanna state for the record, it says, "Under the arbitrary and capricious standard, the finding of a lower court will not be disturbed unless it has no reasonable basis. There should be the absence of a rational connection between facts found and the choice made. There should be a clear error of judgment, an action not based upon consideration of relevant factors, and is so arbitrary or capricious, an abuse of discretion, or otherwise not in accordance with law, or if it was taken without observance of procedure required by law." So, so with that in mind, then, I went to the, the comprehensive land use from the city of Springdale's website, comprehensive land use plan, and just looked through the plan itself to see if I could kinda understand it a little bit better, and so, and whether or not there was a, an arbitrary decision that was, that was truly made. And saying, just some highlights again from the plan. Comprehensive land use plan is not a zoning ordinance, it's a guide. The comprehensive land use plan is a guide to decision-making by the planning commission, the city council, and the mayor. So, again, that didn't seem like there was something that was arbitrary. The, the planning commission listened to, has a vision, finds that, that vision in, in concert with, or consistent with, the land use plan as it's been written. Further, the general land use, the objective is to encourage development of a full range of properly-located and well-designed community for, commercial facilities and residential areas. Land uses should be arranged to minimize situations in which development on certain properties detracts from the enjoyment and the value of surrounding nearby properties. And there's a lot of statements in there about harmony, I don't know if consistency was in there, but I just got a general sense that, again, the, the plan for that area, as I looked at the map, then, showed low density. And I'm thinking, okay, so I'm in a low-density area today. What's consistent with that? And the adjacent properties are low-density, and they're mostly one acre or, or greater. And so if we're gonna have harmony, and we're gonna have consistency, it just seems that that property should be developed accordingly. And to my understanding, the property directly across the street from the subject property is owned by the city of Springdale, is gonna be a park. And so I, I guess I'm unaware of where the, the adjacent property that the appellant is talking about, that is currently zoned SF1. So I would ask that question of Mr. Couch, number one. And then the last thing that I've got really is just, you know, residential land use goals, protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. And again, it, it just seems like, you know, I, I don't wanna deprive the Fields family of, of the fruits of their labor and their fortune and, and that sort of thing. It just seems like there's got to be a better way to address this than to upset the balance that exists currently in that area. So I, again, ask the city council to uphold the planning commission's vote and deny the appeal.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. If you guys will bear with me, I'm representing, we brought a lot of people to the last meeting.
Give us your name.
Nathan Miles, 1105 Excalibur, and I also live in Camelot subdivision. I have an acre and a half property that's adjacent to this development. But again, please bear with me, I think this is about a three-minute script, but I represent a lot of the people. We tried to consolidate and save everyone some time. But speaking to the appeal, I mean, these are really old, tired merits that, that have been put forth that we've seen. You can hide most anything behind denial of due process. The property is currently zoned A1, and could house an incredible residential neighborhood right now. Right now, at A1, you can build large homes on large tracts of land. Just because a property or area is planned as low-density certainly does not mean the planning commission and this council have to approve every project that comes before them, does it? By that line of reasoning, by overturning the planning commission's decision, you'd certainly send a clear message to the Roush Coleman's and to the Riggins, and said, "Hey, we'll take ya. Bentonville won't have ya, Rogers will take ya." The problem with the merits of this appeal is that this proposed development is completely inconsistent with both the existing surrounding properties on all three sides, and the values of those properties, but also inconsistent with the city's vision for that northwest corridor. Look no further than the very subdivision referenced by the engineer from ESI to the planning commission, he referenced Legendary. Mr. Reed, I appreciate your perspective, but that neighborhood has become a transient community of rental properties, home constructions by Roush Coleman and Riggins builders. Riggins been the builder that wants this 20-acre spread, and he builds to one standard, and that's code. Look at this development, it's unfortunate that our presentation isn't working, I don't know if you guys have it, it's on page 18 of tonight's agenda. No amenities, no parks, no pools, no common area. You know, again, the gentleman, Mr. Moore, from ESI drew the comparison of this development to Springdale Harbor, for, to Harbor Meadows. It, it, all of us that know Harbor Meadows knows that, number one, they're beautiful homes, but the, the common area, the ponds, the parks, the trails, that's what makes that such a desirable community. This proposal does none of that. It's just another project with a builder looking to squeeze every red penny they can out of that parcel of land. If you have it in front of you, that's all it is. It's 20 acres with as many homes that they can get on that property. The only thing that stands out about the proposed development is that it's surrounded all three sides, guys. The city owns one side. All other three sides are one to five-acre lots with homes that range from 400,000 to over a million dollars. The appeal states the planning commission's decision was arbitrary and capricious. As the council said, he clearly wasn't at that planning commission meeting. They patiently listened as constituent after constituent defended their property values and concerns, how they, they, then amongst themselves, they discussed the vision for that area and how it's so much more than what this project offers. Springdale is soon gonna build a jewel of a park across from this acreage that will draw the finest engineers and finest builders that want to drive the values of their communities and not just line their pocketbooks. Take a look at Orchard Park, Crystal Bridges, Benton, there's land all around those for sale. Bentonville is not approving these types of projects. They want more. If Springdale plans on closing the demographic gap with their surrounding communities and attracting the business development that we're currently missing out all around us, you've got to uphold these types of decisions. We can do more with that land. There's no one around that land that I know of that's opposed to it being developed. Let's develop it the right way, by a developer that wants to build more and do more and drive the value of what's Springdale. The decision the commission made protects both the interest and vision of Springdale, it also protects those surrounding residents, such as myself, these folks in the room, a lot didn't show, to come tonight, because we're speaking on their behalf. We've also seen the long-term yields of the Legendary-style developments. High rental, high transient populations, deteriorating homes, and stagnant home values. I hope that the council does what we're here to do, and that's to vote on the merits of the appeal. And in this case, a lack thereof. And, and this isn't, this isn't a hard knock on the attorney, but like he said, he clearly was not here, or he would've heard the deliberation that took place with that planning commission in making their decision. They made a decision consistent with all surrounding properties, consistent with the public feedback that was received, no support for the subdivision, by the way, and consistent with the vision that we've heard from this council and from the planning commission to take that northwest corridor and make it something special. Again, if you reference page 18, we're gonna get what we get from Riggins in Legendary, we're gonna get a house that's built to code. We're gonna get yards that are built in the size that meet minimum standards. I ask you guys to, to say, "We're gonna do more with that area, and we're gonna support the decision that was made by the planning commission a few weeks ago." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. Yes, sure.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor, for your time this evening.
Sure.
My name is Tim Heilman, and my company owns...
You say, Tim?
Tim.
Thank you.
Tim Heilman, and my business partner and I, we own a couple of building lots in Camelot subdivision. And I just first wanna say, I've been a resident of northwest Arkansas for 31 years, and this is the greatest place in, I feel like, I've traveled all over the United States, and this probably has to be, you know, top five, for sure. And what I just wanna do is keep the integrity of that surrounding. I think Springdale has done a fantastic job in the, the development of the land for the park that's gonna be developed. I think that's fantastic. But, you know, something the gentleman said earlier is, is the harmony. I was out today looking at other property in northwest Arkansas, West Springdale, North Pawntetown, and just the, the way that area is so open and green. And I think what's gonna happen, because being here for 31 years... And I think what's gonna happen, because being here for 31 years, watching the Legendary subdivision be developed, talking to investors at the, people that are purchased homes in Legendary that are now leasing them, I just don't think it fits with what you're gonna create with the, with the, the field, with the amenities that you're gonna have on the field. And the other thing I'm very fearful of is with, with the construction of those, development of the 20 acres for many residents per acre, I'm, you know, I oppose the rezoning, but I'm not opposed to the development. The development that fits the area. And I know people have already mentioned that, but that's sort of part of my speech. And I just wanted to, you know, they stole my thunder. But anyway, the, the, the long short of it is, is I've been here 31 years. I've seen, I've seen these areas develop. They go in with all the promises, it's gonna, these homes are gonna be beautiful, they're gonna be nice. Well, the next thing you know, two years down the road, there's three cars in the driveway, and there's one on the street. And I just think that that area is just a pristine area, and I think it could be used better than putting four, four homes per acre. And I guess that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tim.
Good evening. My name is Scott Biggs. I live at 8285 Kerry Smith Road, which is actually the corner of Kerry Smith and Ball. And I'm probably the furthest of all the neighbors from the property you're talking about, but I also live right across the street from Legendary. We bought the property 13 years ago, waited six years or seven years to build because we weren't sure what was gonna go in across the street, and the rumors had had that, that were gonna be 1,200 square foot, 1,200 square-foot homes. And so my wife and I decided we weren't gonna build until we found out exactly what was gonna happen. And we were absolutely ecstatic to know we were gonna have one of the most beautiful parks in all of Arkansas across the street, along with the fire station, and we're happy about that. But a couple of things that have not been mentioned is Ball Street is a dangerous road because it's not wide enough to support the traffic that comes down it. Neither is Kerry Smith. Those are something that's gonna have to be addressed because you got, right now, the amount of dump trucks and cement trucks and construction trucks that are coming up and down that highway or that road, and at a lot higher speed than what the speed limit allows, I might mention. And to see the amount of traffic that we have seen in the last three years as Legendary has grown, the traffic on those two roads has quadrupled. You know, you're looking to have a pretty good-sized accident coming out that way. So unless y'all are planning on redoing all the roads and everything, not to mention what happens when the rains hit, if you can see what happens as a, a resident of the area, when the big rains hit, what happens to Camelot and the surrounding areas, the amount of water that comes through there, which is not Springdale's fault, it's just a reality. There's floods in there, you can white water wrap it on. You could wrap it, no problem. I mean, it is absolutely inconceivable how much water comes through there, which I know y'all are gonna address with the park and do the best you can with it. But with the building of all these homes, you're gonna have a whole bunch more water, and it's gonna have to go somewhere, and it's gonna go right back down into Camelot, but that's the only place it can go. So that's a consideration I would like for y'all to think about, too. Because the people that have bought their homes out there and spent tremendous amount of money, the only reason I've been up out there, I couldn't find any land in Springdale to build the kind of home that I wanted to build. I had to move out to Elm Springs to be able to do that. Springdale's got a, they got, they're lacking. And the professionals y'all got coming in with the hospital and all that's gonna move into this area, do you want 'em here in Springdale, or you want 'em in Rogers, Bentonville, and Fayetteville? That's just a decision y'all gotta make, too. Because that's what's gonna happen. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Scott. I mean, you mentioned the roads, and this would be a good opportunity for me to at least tell what, what we know we'll do, we'll be doing. And, and I'm just talking about the roads that border the park. So I'm talking about the County Line Road on the south of the park property and Ball on the west. We will, we're gonna do what we would require anyone else to do.
You open the Kerry Smith also?
No. We're talking about what's bordering the park. What I, yeah.
Kerry Smith does border the park on the north end.
I thought that was already improved. If it's not, then we'll have to improve our part of that. Does it have curb and gutter? Okay, we'll, we'll have to do that.
Yeah, curb.
Okay, we'll have to do that along the park also. So we'll, what we'll do is, and, and I'm, I've had some conversations with Mayor Douthat about this, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that, that Springdale will bear the, the major cost of those improvements, even on the Elm Springs side of the road. And those are discussions we'll continue to have and hope that, hope that Elm Springs can, can contribute and help as much as they can, but it'll make no sense to improve half the road because there may be some grade changes and dealing with drainage and everything. We wanna, we want a good product when we're finished. So, now, the council certainly still has to approve this when that project comes forward. But out of our, as, as part of the improvements and the, and the construction of the park, we, we need, we fully intend to, to improve the roads, but to be clear, that will only be the roads that border the park. So, and for the, so, I just, I, you mentioned roads, and I wanted to let everybody know what, what I believe we'll be doing, so. Okay, anyone else? Jim, you can come on back up, and then we'll, we'll give everybody one more opportunity if we, if we need to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We don't even, we don't even have a motion one way or the other yet, so.
Okay. I'll try to address everything that's been talked about, but I'll touch on some things. It i, it is the Riggins that are trying to buy this property. Their plan is to build 1,800 to 2,200 square-foot homes. I've been on, in the, in the market for homes. I bought a home this year and was looking all around Springdale. You would be hard-pressed to find any new housing for $100 a square foot. I mean, I think it's going from anywhere from 110 to 150 thou, $150 a square foot. And I would submit that, that the Riggins are getting that, too. To suggest that those houses in Legendary owe $150,000 is pure speculation. To suggest that they're all rentals, or suggest that many of them are rentals, is speculation. And when did renting property get to be a bad word? When did, when did smaller homes get to be bad? When did making a profit on property get to be bad? You know, what, what the developer's trying to do is build a subdivision, and that subdivision is consistent with your land use plan. It's consistent with the, now, I don't know how much land the city bought across the road on Ball, but there's a great big yellow blob as you go east on Balls, or on County Line Road, all the way up to, I guess, almost, almost all the way up to the bypass. It's SF2. Whether you call it arbitrary or capricious, or what, those are constitutional terms that, that Ernest and I throw around sometimes. It's a standard that the US Supreme Court and Arkansas Supreme Court talks about, but what it gets down to is fairness. And I know these folks have ni, nice homes. There's no question about that. We don't question that. But is it fair to deny this landowner SF2 when land around him is? And Mr. Heilman got up here, and he said, well, let's, let's keep the integrity of the area. Well, you know what that means? Let's keep it vacant. That, I mean, who doesn't want to see pastoral, green pastures? We, we all do, but if we don't own that land next to us, then we don't have quite as much control. And I, I have, fortunately or unfortunately, I bought two houses next to vacant land, and I took the risk that it was gonna be okay or not okay. And on one time, it turned out okay, and one time it didn't. But that's just kind of the way it goes. If you buy land next to vacant land, it may be developed. And this, this proposed subdivision, which is really not on the table yet, but the SF2 is totally consistent with your land use plan and totally consistent with the, with the neighborhood. The issue of traffic and, and water, I mean, I know those things are an issue in every subdivision, but those are left to the large-scale development, to the subdivision approval. I don't think the planning commission has addressed those yet. But if you rezone it, they'll have to go to that planning commission and get those matters addressed. And if they, they chin the bar, they'll get approved. If they don't, they won't. So, I would submit to you that you should, and I know it's hard. I know, I know how difficult it is when people come up here and say, not in my backyard. Not in my backyard. But just because it's unpopular doesn't make it mean it's not right. And I submit, even though this is unpopular, the right thing to do is to overturn the denial and to rezone this property.
Jim, could I make a quick comment? I don't think I've heard a single person in this room tonight say that single-family homes weren't welcome on this 20 acres.
Well, but it's the size.
I understand, but I'm just telling you, you said a while ago, pastoral land is what we all wish, to keep it that way. I'm just telling you, all the people I've heard speak tonight against this pro, I'm just saying, I'm correcting you if nothing else, Jim.
Okay.
They are not opposed to residential development. As you suggest, it is the size of the lots and the homes.
And I'm suggesting that there's nothing wrong with having...
And I understand.
Those size homes in that area.
And I understand.
Is consistent with everything that this planning, the planning commission is...
All I'm saying is that I've not heard one single person opposed to residential development.
Well, I, I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Small, they're opposed to small homes.
Jim?
Yeah, keep, keep, keep it brief, please. We're gonna...
I wanna clarify, and if the, the representative for the planning committee wants to clarify, I've got the, I've got that land use plan, and that large yellow swath is, it's not SF2. That yellow swath can include SF1. Is that, can you confirm, ma'am? SF, that's right. So, to clarify, once again, he, he's...
Got it, it's SF2.
You, all the yellow? Land use plan, all the yellow? So that includes SF1 and SF2?
Right.
So, again, correcting that he said that, that was, that all that yellow swath was SF2.
Is that a, is that a zoning map you're looking at? The zoning is SF2.
The zoning for, I, he didn't, he didn't define an area.
Is that the park property? Or is that, yeah? Is SF2?
But he was, he spoke to the, Mayor, he spoke to the land use plan. He spoke to the land use plan...
Right.
Which is this, which includes SF1, SF2, so...
I was just getting clear in mind, because I'm looking at one thing...
Yeah.
But what I'm looking at is a zoning map.
And he, right, and he referenced the land use plan. Miss, Jake, I appreciate you hearing what we said because, again, representing our subdivision, we're not opposed at all to that development. It's probably gonna bring a lot of drainage solutions to us. So, just to clarify, because I think the, the attorney, as he said he wasn't here last time, he's made several factually incorrect statements. And I know that he doesn't intend to do so, but he di, he, he made several. But again, it absolutely speaks to, I have an acre and a half and a half-million-dollar home. I don't wanna sound like a pretentious ass, but I see Riggins' product. Riggins used to be in the custom build, build, home building business, because I considered building with him 10 years ago. That's not his business anymore. He's in spec home business and he's building to that one standard, which is city code. We hope you support what the planning commission decided on. Questions?
I, I, I just wanted to say one thing, and this is just from a personal, I, I, I get a little nervous when we talk about particular companies and, and when they're not here to, but, but...
They had the opportunity to be here, right?
Well, let me, let me just say, my son and daughter live in a Riggins' home that's well over $400,000. So I, I don't, and I say that just to make a point, that builders can build to whatever...
Sure.
Whatever their, whatever the market is, is, is asking them to build.
Sure.
I hesitated to even say that, but I, I think it's important, after what you said, that I give a little bit of perspective to that.
And unfortunately, as the, the planning commission representative said, because of the lack of, of...
And my son's really gonna be upset that I said that, but, but I, I felt like I needed to.
And, and it's unfortunate, because if this zoning is, if the decision is overturned, at the end of the day, Riggins can build exactly what he wants to build. We know what we've been promised by an attorney, and we haven't seen Mr. Riggins or any representative of his company to speak otherwise. Therefore, when they do as they choose to do, they don't have to defend their behavior to anyone. Hope you guys uphold this decision.
I've, I've got a question regarding something you'd said earlier about Riggins building a spec home. And I'll, I'll say this, I've never met Mr. Riggins, I've never met the, the property seller, but whenever you say that Riggins builds to code, there's a, there is a pretty large subdivision that I was in recently, Heritage Hills, that, that company is built in, and those are very large homes that are well above the Camelot range, and I believe he's one of the builders in there. And so a blanketed statement of he's just gonna build to code, that, he does, I've seen some of his product...
I have, too.
So it's, it's not just to build to code, and I don't know that it's a fair statement.
And I've, I've seen, like I said, I considered building a large home with him 10 years ago. And so perhaps he, if they were here, they could speak to what their intent was.
Sure, I'm just telling...
But what they've done at Legendary has been to code.
Right. But I'm just saying that some of their other projects are not just too code. He's got a lot of larger homes, too, that have done well. But here's another question. You'd said earlier that you want us to send a message to Roush Coleman and Riggins. What is that message?
As, as the planning commission deliberated, Mayor, you were there. There's a, there's a, the attorney spoke to, there is a need for these homes, and there's also a place for those homes. When you look at, if you've attended Bentonville planning meetings or council meetings, they're extremely strategic in what they're placing around what they consider their city jewels that will attract business, entertainment, places for people to make money and to spend money. And without digressing, I know the city council's well, well aware that we have a gap right now in the city of Springdale in getting those businesses to come here.
So the specific message you want us to send to the builders is what?
I think we've, it's been pretty, several spoke to the planning commission and spoke to Mr. Moore, that we would, and, and three weeks have transpired since this. And what a gesture it would've been had Mr. Moore or Riggins said, what, what can we do? Can we do an SF1 and do two homes per acre? Can we show you what we're gonna build? The fact that they evaded that type of an opportunity just rises concern with us.
Okay.
And again, by looking, if you, if you look at page 18, it's clear what their intention is. Because people don't build custom homes and don't have any amenities, don't have common areas.
So, and this isn't directed towards you, but I'll say this, the number one issue that Springdale has facing it, I believe, as opposed to other cities in the area, is average household income. And I think that's probably what keeps us from getting some of the retail, some of the dining, some of the entertainment that the other cities get. We're talking about, on average, $240,000 homes, if this is gonna be 1,800 to 2,200 square-foot homes going for $120 a square foot, which is pretty common right now. We're talking about a home that I would say probably 80% of Springdale could not afford to live in. We're building a park out there that we want as many people in there as we can get, and we, we, I've had a lot of conversations about we have to protect that area. And when you talk about protecting something, you, you have to ask, what are we protecting? And the most important thing that people have said is that park that we're gonna be investing the bond money into. But the argument that I'm hearing from residents is really not protecting the park, it's protecting their land value. And I, I don't know that this is going to reduce land value compared to just having a pasture there. We talk about harmony, I've heard that said, that this is going to disrupt the harmony there. There is, there is not a lot of harmony between Camelot and a pasture. There's no harmony in that whatsoever. And, and if we can build 60, $240,000 homes, that is something that would benefit the city of Springdale greatly. We don't have any inventory on homes right now. And I would disagree with some of the earlier remarks about what these are going to be. I, I took time, I haven't spoke to the builder, but I put in enough time and research to, to feel comfortable in knowing about what is being spent on this land and what these homes are gonna cost. And I can tell you, if we were to go back and do this and put... this and put one acre lots in there, like people are wanting us to do, you would have to sell that for $80,000 approximately, just to break even on it. And lots are not going for that right now.
That's what, that's what a lot went for in our subdivision, in all due respect.
Well-
Mr. Fulfer, have you seen what $240,000 gets you in Northwest Arkansas right now?
Yeah.
Roush Coleman, Roush Coleman, two-story, Roush Coleman's two-story homes, all siding, 2399.
It gets you a lot of Springdale residents that live here.
So, and, and again, I don't want to digress on a one-on-one, but is your contention that you want to, to, to create an environment where Springdaleans now, now can buy a nicer home, or the contention that's been made pretty clear before you is that attracting from the outside and bringing in those doctors at Mercy, they won't buy, they won't be buying the 220,000 or 1,800 square foot home that Riggins is building?
Sure. And, and let me say this concerning that, we live in a free market economy. And whenever there's a demand, someone who's willing to invest millions of dollars will say, "I would like to make a profit on that," and they'll build one acre lots. But the fact is, that's not selling in Springdale right now. And that, that's what moves the needle. The, the, the potential of earning a profit in, in a capitalistic society is what moves the needle. And there is a builder and an investor, and I would say, the message we want to send our builders and developers is opposite of what you had said earlier. We want to send a message that we're willing to have a quarter of a million dollar home plus in this area where we're going to build a park. And I, we don't have an inventory on this right now. And so, to build these and to sell this out would raise the average household income in Springdale. And, and, and like I said, the profit is what moves the needle. The reason nobody's putting one acre lots on here is because they'd have to sell them for $80,000 at a minimum, just to break even. And nobody's going to invest multiple millions of dollars to break even. But what they will do is invest in this, because a quarter million dollar homes, if you sell 60 of those, you can make a profit. That's what drives-
You can make a lot of profit.
That's what drives this, not the local government demanding, "We're only going to allow half million dollar homes on this property to protect another subdivision."
I don't think that's, I don't think that's the request. I don't believe anybody's made that statement.
What would be an, an acceptable size of home?
You know, I'm not going to speak to an acceptable size. I think the challenge, again, has been with the number of houses per acre. The development is pretty clear in front of you, absolutely no amenities. The objective of this is very clear by the builder. In 18 months, that subdivision will, will be built. And unless you have data, or, otherwise, what we see is, is neighboring residents of Legendary, we see the full rent signs. We see the cars stacked up in the driveways and roads. That's what Riggins' neighborhoods in that area, that he's looking to duplicate. That's what's happening to those.
Well-
I'm here to represent ourselves, and we, we could, we have to make some conclusions based off of his nearby projects. They're not here to represent themselves.
Okay. Well, I've reached out to them and to some of the people involved in this, and my understanding is it's not going to be necessarily the exact same that's in Legendary. It'll probably be a step up from that.
I wish they would have been here to share that with us.
Well, the problem is, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna-
I understand, it's contentious.
It's not a zoning question.
Right.
And, and the density, as, as, as our planning director said, between SF1 and SF2 is, they, they both allow the same number of homes. There's a difference by 10 feet of the lot frontage, but my-
We have SF2, I believe allows for up to two homes per acre.
No, it's four.
Four units per acre.
So, again, I hear you guys. I've also heard countless meetings watching on television of closing this gap, and I, I disagree with the council member that thinks 21800 square foot homes are going to do it. We've got that inventory, maybe used properties, but we got that inventory, Legendary's chock full of it. So, let's do more, right? Let's build neighborhoods. And, and what I would say to, because he drew a line there, "Am I defending our neighborhood or the park?" We're thrilled about that park. But treat your park like Bentonville treats Orchard Park. They're not approving these types of developments. Call the mayor. If, if you want to do some market research, find out what they're looking for to build around Crystal Bridges and Orchard Park. They're not looking for these cookie cutter postage stamp neighborhoods. That's why there's none around there.
You think there's a difference in that area and what, and the pasture land?
I think there's an opportunity.
Okay. Well, it's not the, the local government's job to demand what is built on property. That's not our job. We're, we're there to approve things like this, so a builder and a developer can go make a profit on that land.
So, you represent the profit of the builder?
We, what I represent is, is pro-business, where I want to send the message to our builders and developers, "We want you to build here. We want you to invest in land that is this expensive, and hopefully build homes there that are, are great homes." Like I said, I mean, your definition of great is probably different than mine, but 240,000 dollar home-
Doesn't get much in Northwest Arkansas. You got to do the market research, sir.
80% of Springdale disagrees with you.
It doesn't get you much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Nathan. One more, one more, yeah, quickly, please, since folks that have been up here, thank you.
I just saw that Riggins' home is 3,500 square feet. Beautiful home. Why can't you build a 3,500 square foot house on that property? I've lived in Clear Creek, if anybody knows where that's at. John Tyson, tons of money into that neighborhood. Okay, it didn't fill up in a week, it didn't fill up in three years, and it's still not full. But beautiful homes, beautiful property. And it will eventually fill up. And with the hospitals coming, people are going to look for that. I still believe people are going to look for those style homes. And also to touch on the $80,000 lots, I have two lots for sale, and they're $80,000 if anybody's interested in living in a really nice neighborhood. But thank you again.
Thank you, Tim.
I'd just make one closing remark.
Go ahead.
I'm one of the few natives of Springdale, Arkansas, my age. And-
Overton's older.
Okay. I said one of the few. But folks, we're not Bentonville. You know, it's a nice community, but we're not Bentonville. We're Springdale. What we need to do is help the residents of Springdale. And whether we like it or not, the people that live in Springdale are blue collar workers. We have the plants, we have the industry. They're the people that are going to fill up homes. Those are the people that we need to build homes for. You know, as much as we'd like to have doctors' homes, one doctor's home on 10 acres is not going to do as much good as these houses on this 20 acres. And every home out there that's built will contribute to this community, tax-wise and otherwise. And I submit that it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I was at the planning commission meeting for this, Doug, and, and several of the planners talked about Northwest Springdale and what they want to see. But at the same time, even if we zoned that RE, somebody could come in there in an RE zone and build a $90,000 home to code. Nothing says what size that home has to be, no matter what the lot size is, not anything. And so, therefore, I think that eventually, real soon, we can get to some kind of a residential building, you know, code, standard. But at this time, I think that I'm going to make a motion to overturn this appeal.
Okay, we have a motion to overturn the decision of the planning commission?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion or question, counsel? Okay, Denise?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
No.
Culver?
No.
Watson?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Page 62. The way this works is, there'll be an ordinance brought back at the next city council meeting, which I believe is June 12th, that will actually affect the rezoning. My understanding is that there is a preliminary plat that will go to planning commission on June 5th. Is that correct, Patsy?
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Item, that was our planning commission report. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda here is an ordinance to rezon 1.86 acres owned by Timothy and Laurel Hines located on West Ivy Lane. They want to request, or the request is to rezon the property from A1 to C2. The planning commission recommends the approval of the rezoning request, the title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to general commercial district C2 and declaring an emergency."
Pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve and a second. Any other questions or comments with the council? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry 8-0.
And I didn't state that each one of those that have emergency clause has because we have an pending sale or a pending development proposal before the planning commission. The next item is a request to rezon 7.26 acres located on the west side of Thompson, north of County Line Road. The request is to rezon the property from general commercial district C2 to multifamily, to medium density multifamily residential district MF12. Planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning request, the title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C2 to medium density multifamily residential district MF12 and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve. Any other comments or questions?
Can you just remind me what MF12 is?
It allows for fourplexes and multifamily larger than that, no more than 12 units per acre. To start with, you have to, the minimum you can start with was eight, and to get up to 12, you have to meet the incentives and the multifamily design standards in order to be able to get to 12 units per acre. With that comes open space, other amenities, and those kind of things.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry 8-0.
The next request is to rezon property owned by Philip Daniel, property located at 7948 West Gibbs Road. The request is from A1 district to residential estate district RE. Planning commission recommends approval of the ordinance, the title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 to residential estate district RE and declaring an emergency."
First we pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further comments or questions?
Can you just briefly tell me about this picture on page, I guess, page 40? I'm not sure what-
This is a piece of property that they're actually splitting off a lot and rezoning it to RE. It'll be a minimum of one acre.
So, the rest of the property is the remaining A1?
Uh huh. And it'll, it's a tandem lot, has a long access road to it.
Okay. Anyone else need to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry 8-0.
The next item is a rezoning request to own, to rezon property owned by Trail Blazers Association located at the southeast corner of Dot Avenue and OY Road. If you remember, this is the Fitzgerald Station property and two tracks that's adjacent to it. They're requesting to rezon that property from SF2 and MF4 and O1 to an institutional district P1. Planning commission reviewed this request and recommends approval, the title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from low, medium, density, single-family residential district SF2 and low, medium, density, multifamily residential district MF4 and neighborhood office district O1 to institutional district P1 and declaring an emergency." This is a piece of property where the trailhead for the mountain bike-
Will the ordinance pass?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the emergency clause pass?
Second.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fullfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Ordinance passes eight zero, emergency clause passes six two.
They do have some plans for expansion that sounds different.
He doesn't like Baptists.
I'm sorry. He's not Baptist, that's what you said. Moving right along, the next item on the agenda is a replat of lots one and two of the final plat of Churchill Crescent, Phase Two subdivision. They're combining these two lots into one. Planning commission reviewed this replat and recommends approval, title of the ordinance reads an ordinance accepting the replat of lots one and two of the final plat of Churchill Crescent, Phase Two to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
The ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and second to pass. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Again, move the emergency clause pass.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
So we don't need any explanation why it's an emergency?
Well, they have a building plan they want to get started on. I do know that.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carry eight zero.
Next item is a waiver of improvements in the sidewalk in connection with a single-family home being built at 6957 East Downham Road. Do I have the right one first? Or do I have the wrong one first? There's two, okay, I got the right one. This is just a very narrow track that has drainage onto Downham Road. Planning commission recommends approval of the waiver of the sidewalk, which would be option one. Title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Manuel Navah in connection with single-family dwelling at 6957 East Downham Road."
Move the resolution pass with option one.
Second.
Okay. We have a resolution to approve, option one, and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Yes sir.
I'm the owner of the property.
What's your name, sir?
Manuel Navah.
Okay Manuel.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, so it's gonna, it's gonna pass or?
Well, we hadn't voted yet.
Oh no, yes.
Okay, so I.
Is there anything you want to say?
No, not really.
Okay, thank you. You may have something to say after, after this vote, I don't know. Okay. Denise?
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Navah carried eight votes to zero.
That may be the best tactic I've ever seen. Get something passed. That worked real well for you. Okay, go ahead Patty.
We'll, we'll send the notice to, to the Billion Spectre cell, don't know. Have you got your CFO yet?
I guess.
Okay, did he post the bond? Payment, he did? Okay, we'll, we'll get something done to get your money released, just as soon as we get all the paperwork done, okay?
Thank you.
The next item is a request for waiver of curb scudders and sidewalks in connection with the Don Tyson School of Innovation, large scale number L1815, and they're actually asking to only improve at the length of the development that's being, that's occurring. Not the entire length of the piece of property. I'm looking at Jason to make sure I got that one right. Okay. They're adding an additional building and parking, correct. And the building and the parking is in the backside of the, of the property, so they're not extending use further to the south of this piece of property at this time. So they want to get a waiver of the street improvements. Planning commission recommends approval.
Okay.
Street improvements but not sidewalks?
So what we're proposing is the, the southern entrance currently into the school of innovation, there will be a, a second entrance south of there, approximately 200 to 300 feet. And so we are going to improve the road and sidewalk to that southern drive, just not further south. There's probably another 900 feet south.
Yeah, point being that you will put a sidewalk in front of the part that you're improving.
Newly developed, yes.
I don't think Dr. Cleveland's going to ask for another sidewalk.
I understood that, but I, I just wanted clarification.
But not the full 900 feet.
So that would be what option?
One.
One? Okay, did we get a second? Well, we didn't get a motion. Well, let's don't get a second.
Resolution pass, option one.
Second.
All right, motion and second for option one. Anyone else need to speak to that? Okay Denise?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
The next item is a waiver of street improvements, which would include drainage improvements and sidewalks in connection with a preliminary plat for Parkway Plaza subdivision. And this is the property on the east side. Those improvements will be included with the large scale when it is submitted for that piece of property on the corner, rather than being part of this project right here, so we're, we're waiving it until that piece of property comes in for development. I know it is under contract for purchase and have seen some layouts for it, so I don't think it'll be a long amount of time, but that allows them to go ahead and continue with this for a highly significant project we're just looking at that will be at the end of this.
So still option one, right?
Still option one.
So I didn't really understand what you just said. It, it will be improved later, is that what you said?
The sidewalk and the drainage on the west side of the street will be done when the property.
On the west?
On the west side is developed. When this property started, the property owner on that corner lot was not willing to provide any easements or acts in, as a result, they built the road, everything except the sidewalk and the drainage improvements on that side. The only way they could have access to that piece of property would be they have to continue those improvements on that side when that development proposal comes in. Normally, we would require it to be split on the property line with half on each side, but if you can't get the property owner on the west to donate the right of way, you gotta shift it over and be able to not hold up all the development because we had a property owner that wasn't willing to, to do that at the time. Since that time, that property is under contract. I think the development will move forward with it and we'll get that side of the street built, and the access will grant, be granted to it like it should be. But for the time being, we are waiving that so this project can move forward, that street can be constructed, so there'll be access to the property to the south of it for a major development.
Okay, so what are we waiving, just the sidewalk?
It actually sidewalks and drainage.
Sidewalks and drainage?
Right.
But they will be completed when the other development comes in, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
On both sides?
Everything on the east side will be completed as it's supposed to. It's only the sidewalks and the drainage on the west side that's not being completed with this Parkway Plaza preliminary plat. And it's to let them move forward while the other is being worked out.
Is there, will this property be under a large-scale development?
Yes.
And will there be lighting requirements on that large-scale development?
There always is lighting requirements, yes. They have to submit a lighting plan to show how their, how the lot is being light, lit, and with a one-foot candle for all the areas, and it doesn't bleed over to other areas, that kind of stuff too.
I, I just wanted.
We, we need to remember when we do street projects, put in street lights.
That won't bleed over.
And it would help if the engineers put the wiring in for the street lights when we do it. Not like Ellen Springs Road.
Yeah, street lights.
Oh, the overpass.
The overpass.
Yeah.
We had to pay another 38 grand just to put the wiring in.
That was.
Even though it was designed and the planning, planning director dismissed it.
No, 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 no. That was a highway department project, that wasn't a city project. We, we paid our money directly to the highway department.
We paid the engineers for it though.
We had to pay it later.
That's right. Planning department oversight.
You, you never, you never forget any of those things, do you? You need to tell me when I get it right once in a while, okay?
Or taxpayers, you don't have to pay for it again.
We're involved, yeah.
Nope.
Have you read this? Have we got a motion?
No, we do not.
But it's been read.
It's been read.
Move the resolution pass with option.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else? Go ahead Denise.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
The next request is a waiver of sidewalks in connection with a single-family dwelling at 6873 East Downham Road, which is just adjacent to the one we just did. Title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutter, and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Robert and Brandy McClelland, connection with 6873 East Downham Road, single-family dwelling." Planning commission recommends approval of the waiver on that one too.
Move the resolution.
Option one. Second.
Okay. Got a motion and second, option one. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay.
Does this be improved then at the same time when the east side, pardon me, the west side? Explain to me why this one is being, I know we just, what we just did.
But we're granting a way.
This is different.
Recommending approval, it's the one right next to it, yes.
Thank you, okay.
It's just to the east of the one we just did.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, go ahead Denise.
Reed?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
The next item is a waiver of street improvements, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a large-scale for Seven Brew Drive through coffee. This is going in the parking lot adjacent to the Harp Store at Sunset. This is a waiver of the street improvements, well, the street that really does need to be improved, they need sidewalks and street lights along with Sunset Avenue, the planning commission recommends approval of that. We didn't get sidewalks when all the rest of it was built, this is just a small addition to that parking lot, and they're not leasing any of that area either, so we will have a Seven Brew at that location.
Move the resolution pass.
Option one.
Option one.
Option one.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Anyone else? All right.
There's a side comment, I noticed that coffee place went out of business there on.
Off 412 by the.
Remember we did the music thing where they had.
Yeah, Cleo's Furniture's in front of that and.
Yeah. There's several, several brews around the, around the region.
Right.
If I remember right, this one's going to be amazing, they don't have any customer walk-in.
No, everything's supposed to be drive-up, because we did have that discussion, no walk-up to this one, you gotta drive-up.
All right Denise?
Jacobs?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
And the next item is to add another activity at that same piece of property. There has in the past been a Shave the Planet mobile vending at that location, they have new ownership. This is a request to grant that to mobile vending at 2940 West Sunset, the same location it's been in the past. Title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use for Russell Merrill for a mobile vending unit at 2940 West Sunset Avenue, set forth in ordinance number 430 with the following conditions. May it operate between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, no obstruction of parking spaces required for the operation of any other use on the site. Maintain on the site a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. A health certificate is required, display the health certificate in manners visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow, no obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs, no vending upon a public way. Sound, any device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinance in connection with a vending operation. Keep the vending sites clean and free of paper or refuge of any kind generated from the operation of their business. All trash or debris accumulating within 20 feet of any vending stand collected and deposited into a trash container." We did go through with the owner of the property and looked at all the parking requirements for everything that's there, and with these on there, they still can meet the minimum parking requirements for what's on the site, and that doesn't count any of the parking that's on the west side of the access driver in front of the OK Mart store. They won't be used, that's not required to have any of this for these operations to operate.
Move the resolution pass with the conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any further comments or questions?
So they had a, they had a place there before?
They had a trailer, shaved landing.
But it lapsed or?
No, the business sold, Shave, Shave the Planet sold out to a new owner. A conditional unit, a conditional use for a mobile vending is given to that owner at that location, can be transferred without coming back and going through the process, that's why we're here. They did the one at the Harp Store up north the time before, and we were working, trying to work out the parking re-. If you've been over there lately or been to the theater, there's a lot more parking spaces being taken up by the theater than there used to be, so that's why we went back and checked to make sure there was adequate parking for all of the activities that are going on there.
Got everything? Let's vote.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Evans?
Yes ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
And we should have put these two things together.
Yeah, I wouldn't have had to ask my question a while ago.
Yeah, so thi- this is a resolution approving a conditional use for a tandem lot split for Philip Daniel at 7948 Wes Gibbs-Rose is set forth in ordinance number forty-three, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second for, to pass. No other comments? Okay, Denise.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Here's eight zero, sorry.
All right, item eleven, Street and Capital Improvement Committee reports, recommendations, Chairman Rick Evans, Rick.
Been last week, Streets IP, and there's one resolution on the Genonite, and he was recommended for approval. It's a resolution authorizing, excuse me, a new contract in this Dixie land and is also, we're, we're paying for part of it and the property owners are paying for part of it.
Right.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments or questions? All right, Denise.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
Okay, item twelve, Parks and Recreation Committee reports recommendations, Chairman Mike Lawson, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor, we got one item, it was, we met last week. It's a resolution appropriating funds for replacing fence along the Razorback Greenway. It's just some fence that blew down and we're required to replace it and it's a total of fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay.
First, this be adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further questions or comments? Denise?
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
Okay, we're at item thirteen, Police and Fire Committee reports and recommendations, Chairman is Rick Culver, Rick.
Mayor, we had two items come, two resolutions that authorize execution of a purchase of contract for the Fire Department equipment, and I'll let the chief speak on that if he would like. And they both was recommended for approval.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'll be brief. Basically, what we're looking at is buying two engines and a Quint on the first resolution, the second resolution is a heavy rescue truck, which will be replacements. The actual engines are new for the stations that were currently in process of building with the bond, and it takes about twelve months to get those units, so...
Okay.
Pick them both together and move the resolutions pass.
Second.
Any problem with that, doing A and B at the same time?
Why don't we just do them one at a time so it's clear?
There are, aren't there?
Read both of them?
No, he'll, did you read both, Rick? I know the chief did.
No.
It'd be just, do we have a motion to do, to pass A, to approve A?
A, a motion to approve the first one then.
Okay.
And there's a second.
Do we have a second? All right, thank you. Okay, we're voting on thirteen A. Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Okay, and have you read B?
Okay, B is a resolution authorize the execution of the purchase contract for the Fire Department for equipment.
Move the resolution pass.
They sound very similar, don't they?
Sounded just almost the same.
Exactly, exactly the same.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, can I?
Go ahead, Colby.
Just for, I think we discussed this in the committee, committee meeting when we talked about the bidding process, that HGAC does bid that out.
That's correct, every year they bid this.
Since we're spending bond money, I just wanna make sure everybody knew that we were doing our due diligence.
Thank you, that's why we do them separate, there you go. All right, Denise?
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Here's eight zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Item fourteen, A resolution making a reappointment to the Advertising and Promotion Commission of the City of Springdale, Wyman?
Move the resolution pass.
Oh, never mind, Wyman.
Second, would you like to mention this young man's name?
Cole.
Say it again?
Justin Cole.
I was just...
Oh, it's Justin, Justin Cole. The reappointment, uh...
Reappointment, Justin Cole.
Right, all right. Any other comments or questions? All right, Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Here's eight zero.
All right, thank you, Justin, with the naturals, thank you. Item fifteen, A resolution making an appointment to the Springdale Civil Service Commission. I'll have to go, we, we're making two. This is, this is Charles?
Charles Farmer.
Okay, and Charles is here, in case you have any questions or comments or concerns.
Probably have a lot of concerns.
You'd have to bring up your concerns, didn't you?
Yeah.
One of them's his ear.
All right, so, did we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, do we have a performance report on this particular applicant, on his activities on the commission?
He's hard to keep up with.
Well, that's because the city attorney is prosecuting you and the, and the chief of police has arrested you, so no, no big deal.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Charles Farmer to continue on the Civil Service Commission. Any other comments or questions? Denise?
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Reluctantly, yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Here's eight zero, I'm sorry we didn't read your whole bio into the record, but...
Thanks for your, yeah, thanks for your willingness to continue to serve, Charles, appreciate it. Item sixteen is making an appointment to the Springdale Airport Commission. And Wyman?
Andrew Barker.
A reappointment of Andrew Barker?
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Oh, we can't do that, we gotta do... I gotta tell, I'm, I'm gonna tell you.
Mayor, I know you're getting tired.
Watson has asked so many questions and I drank a full bottle of water, so I'm trying to speed this along a little bit. Go ahead, Denise.
I have some questions on this one, too.
Okay, great.
Culver?
If you have more than one, we'll go to recess.
Culver?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Reed?
Yes.
Jay Cox?
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to make informed votes, ma'am.
You, you just keep right on, that'll work. Item seventeen, A resolution making an appointment to the Springdale Civil Service Commission. Uh, this is Danny McGinley, I've asked to, to...
Mine says Jerry Martin.
Jerry Martin's, uh...
Hmm?
Yeah, Jerry Martin, is that what, is yours to talk about Jerry?
It says his term expired.
His term expired.
Okay, I see.
And we appre- certainly appreciate Jerry's service on the commission and, and Danny McGinley, I am bringing forward for approval or for consideration.
I move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further questions or comments? All right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Fulfer?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Here's eight zero.
All right. We'll go ahead and delve into eighteen. An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for uniform rental services for the Springdale Public Works Department, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Uh, this is coming back, Council, because we had our, our last resolution to approve contracting with Aramark. Uh, the, the agreement did not match up with what this, what with the resolution the council passed. There was a slight difference in price and there was also a difference between a one-year contract and a three-year contract that, and, and they need, they need to, if, if they're going to contract with the City of Springdale, it needs to be for three years. I think, I think they have a, a policy or that, that all new customers start with a three-year contract. And so I couldn't sign the agreement the way it was, so if we do a three-year contract, we also need to do an ordinance to waive competitive bidding because it, you're, you're talking about a three-year amount rather than a one-year amount. And it puts it over the limit to what we can do without, without bidding.
Did we not start out, though, with a five-year when we first started this, when it was sent on?
We, I think this started with a, we, I think we, we were asking to waive competitive bidding for a five-year deal with Centos, yes.
Yeah, I don't remember the, okay.
I'm gonna make a motion, ordinance pass.
So, okay, I'll let it go through this process.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance to waive competitive bidding. And in doing this, that would do everything we need for me to be able to sign it, okay, okay, just wanna be sure we didn't need something extra.
What did you say, Kathy?
Go ahead.
In the finish it because I wanted to...
Go ahead, Kathy, we've got a motion and a second, we'll take comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, the price difference that you referred to is what? Does anybody know? The price difference between what we were originally given and what it is now, does anybody know?
It was in the neighborhood of...
Eleven-six is what was approved for one year.
Eleven-six was approved for one year, we're at thirteen, it's in your packet.
It's on page one-ten.
What was Centos', it was twelve-something, wasn't it?
Twelve?
Yes.
I'll tell you.
And would this contract also give us the, the capability of, of doing the same price checking at the end of every year, so that if...
You've got a three-year, um...
So, I mean, are we locked into that then for three years?
Yeah, Centos was twelve-two, you've got a three-year layout of the, the price each year. I think there would be the same opportunity to, to exit from the contract annually. Yeah.
So, can I ask why in our packet we have Aramark and we also have a resolution for Centos?
I had, I asked Ernest to prepare a resolution for Centos because if you all, as, as we started this process, you wanted a one-year agreement. So, the only way we were gonna get a one-year agreement is if we don't go with Aramark. So, rather than have Ernest prepare a resolution and just whip it out if we needed it, I wanted to go ahead and put it on the, put it as supporting documentation, so you'll know, uh, what the, what the option would be if you did not wanna go with a three-year agreement.
Do we, do we know what Aramark's five-year bid was?
I'm not sure we ever got a five-year, because I think by the time we went, when we went to quotes, I think we were going to one-year.
There was a five-year bid somewhere from Aramark, from everybody, I think that's what they were asked for originally, back in October, I think.
Because it may be, it may be more cost-effective to just do the five years opposed to the three.
But Centos' had a clause in it, Colby, that...
It could be...
That they could raise, that there was some formula that they could raise the price...
Oh, they did.
At the, and, pardon me?
They did.
By percentage, every...
Look, I think, I think both of them raised the price each year.
That's why...
In a multi-year deal.
They'll say that Centos has more people...
We thought the Aramark was gonna be eleven thousand and something, and now it's gonna be thirteen thousand?
That's what you approved on the resolution.
Well, how, how did we make that mistake?
I, I don't know that we made a mistake. Er, we'll let Aramark come up and explain the difference.
Well, because, wouldn't that, weren't we looking at the price comparisons and...
Yes.
That's where I'm confused.
Good evening, guys.
Go ahead, Justin.
Justin Hurst with Aramark. The, the price difference on the original tabulation was a eighteen-dollar service charge that was not provided on the, the tabulation to the Director of Public Works. So, I, I filled out the form he gave to me and then submitted it back to him, there was an additional charge.
There, there's a, there's some dollars more difference, not much, I don't know where that's coming from, because I added eighteen...
Right.
Dollar, yeah.
That's, that's an optional program on, on the thirteen thousand, it's called inventory maintenance, and we, we never got to that point of, of the conversation.
Well, yeah, we're not opting for the, what's that called?
It's called inventory maintenance?
Oh, inventory maintenance.
Yes, and then there's also Easy Care in there.
Yeah, Easy Care, Easy Care is what we're not...
Correct, I understand that, yeah.
Okay, okay. I knew there was a, a, a small dollar difference besides the eighteen dollars a week.
Correct, yeah, that would be inventory maintenance on the towels.
By adding this eighteen dollars per uniform, I guess, is what drives it up?
No, it's a...
Per week, to the city, which is, how much a year, eighteen times fifty-two, I had it figured.
Nine hundred and...
How'd that take it up to thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars then?
There's a, another thing that's not spelled out in the contract that you all said you're going to waive.
Ri- right, well, the invent, the difference here that you're asking about is the inventory maintenance on some of the allied products that the, the Public Works uses. Um, it's a optional program that, what I proposed to you guys was not signed right here, it was, I was given to Mayor Sprouts, here's the, here's the proposal, call me with questions, and he referred me to, um, the Director of Public Works, and he referred me back, and that's, this is where we are now. It was not just signed right here, here's the proposal, you can opt into this program, you can opt into this program.
But, okay, I just wanna be sure, the, the figure, the thirteen thousand dollar figure...
Mm-hmm.
Thirteen whatever. For the first year, there are some fees that will be waived that, that could not be in the agreement.
Yes.
And those fees add up to somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen hundred dollars, yeah, that was a prep and emblem.
So, that would reduce ultimately, I, I don't know what guarantee we got, unless you just write it on the contract or something.
It is written on the contract, correct.
All right, so that would reduce, Jeff, that first year by about eighteen hundred dollars.
So, it's thirteen hundred less eighteen, is what you're saying?
Thirteen thousand le- whatever.
Thirteen thousand eight hundred.
Less about eighteen hundred.
So then that's, put it at twelve thousand.
What happens the second year?
Well, the second year...
No, I wanna, can I speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead, Richard, but I, I think the second year, I don't think those waives, I don't think those would've been charges, so I don't think those waivers would matter.
What, what Mayor, what Mayor Sprouts is talking about, on the initial setup to get you going in the deal, we waive the, the prep and emblem charge.
Right.
It don't carry on, that's for the first thirty days.
Right.
Okay, if you...
That's the eighteen hundred dollars.
That's eighteen hundred dollars that you're saving, that's not off of the bid or anything like that, that's just, that's just saving you money.
Well, but it's bottom line to us...